Ms. Door, Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Ms. Burke. And Ms. Owen.
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chair.
Okay, well. We have here some of the questions and answers that were presented before, and some of the ones that were put on Google Docs before today. So if you'd like to take a minute to look over that and see if there's anything in there that you might want to check on, there's something further. But we won't. And even if it went in over the weekend into the Google Docs. So if it wasn't in there by Friday, it's not on here.
Correct, although there's some overlap. We worked this weekend to make sure we had everything that came last week. And then we'll work as fast as we can to get everything that's in the Google Doc that came on this weekend or today. But there's overlap between what was put in the Google Doc and what was discussed in prior sessions. Also, we uploaded this to Board Docs as well, so.
Yes, if you remembered to bring your computer.
Yes. I cannot assist with that.
No. So just take a couple minutes. And if, when you're ready to respond to anything or ask anything, whether it's on here or not on here, if you'll just indicate that. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I expected, I expected a little bit more detail. I'm thankful to see the breakdown regarding the STEM academies. I'm thankful to see the estimated cost for the variances on the pay raise. But there, so for instance, there's no, there isn't a proposal on how to address the substitute teachers. There's not an estimate on the cost for the assistant principal decompression at this point. I don't see an estimated amount to ensure we have a full-time nurse in every school. So I'm left not with a lot more information than we had last week.
Do you want me to?
Sure, if somebody would.
I mean, the truth of the matter is, some of those things are just going to require more time than we have to fully put together. I mean, for example, the AP decompression, you know, we worked for several weeks, if not months, to put together the teacher decompression and the principal decompression. I think we could make some very ballpark estimates, but to be able to determine, do the research to determine what the decompression for APs would look like, and then to do a full resume review of all the APs to figure out where they would then fall on the decompression to therefore determine the full cost of that would just take more time than we currently have. So I'm not, we're not trying to not be responsive, there's just only so much that we can do in the allotted time. I certainly heard a lot about the subs, so we will see what we can try to figure out on that front, even in a ballpark way. But some of the questions or requests, again, we want to be as responsive as we can, there are just some things that just take more time than we have.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm, that, you know, that's this budget process, this is, this, there's a month allocated for our budget process to do exactly this work. The assistant principal decompression in particular, if, I'm sure you recall, this was an item that I brought up last year. So there's been time to think about how that would work. To be frank, if I were, I would not have been surprised to see the line item, which was, it was $500,000 to do principal decompression. So I would, I would presume that the amount for the assistant principal decompression would be somewhere thereabouts there. We know the number of assistant principals that we have, so I'm just not sure why we're not able to have a line item here. You know, ultimately, we're trying to determine at this stage in our budget process what our needs are. And so what I'm hearing is that there really isn't a lot of room to consider any additional needs beyond the ones that are on the table. And, and I'm left somewhat perplexed because that's exactly the activity that we are called to do during, during this month or so time that we have.
If I may clarify, I am more than happy to put in $500,000 on the budget as a placeholder for the AP decompression. I just don't know at this point if that is a little bit low or a little bit high. So I don't want to give the impression that I am in any way against addressing the needs that have been raised. All that the document was articulating is at this point, we don't know exactly what that would be. If the Board would like to put aside $750,000 for it, that is, that is fine as well. So it's, it's just, we are not at a point where we can give precise guidance to the Board, but again, welcome if the Board feels strongly about the AP decompression and FY21 to put a placeholder amount there for it.
If you'll look at that and see if there's anything you would like to.
If I may just add one more thing, there were a number of potential additions that have been raised in the conversation. This document is not intended to be responsive to that. We will provide some updates to the proposed budget, hopefully tomorrow, based on the discussion this evening and what we've had so far. This was merely an effort to just answer questions that had come up about various explanations and such that the Board had asked for, to the extent we had the time to do analyses that were requested. So there were a number of things that were raised by Board members as potential adds, some in the Google Doc, which we'll take a look at over the next 24 hours and come back with some modifications, excuse me, for discussion tomorrow.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gibson.
So my request is to, at this stage, is I'd like to know the exact dollar amount for principal decompression last year. So, so if that number can be provided, that would be great. And, and I would request that, that the administration works with HR to get a ballpark amount for assistant principal decompression and to, and to look at the number of days that we generally are required to have substitutes and, and to provide both an option that would include a full-time substitute position as Mr. Barlow had suggested, or, you know, increasing the per diem for substitutes as well. I'd be curious to see also the Henrico, the Chesterfield amounts, the other county amounts. So I'd like to see a bit more of a thorough investigation. I recently saw on Twitter, the amazing Ms. Giles at Carver was substituting herself, and I know we would, while I'm, you know, it's amazing to see principals that are able to step up to the task in that way, I also know that our principals have quite a lot on their plate. And I, I don't want, I want to ensure that if that happens, it's out of choice and not out of requirement, so that, you know, our school leadership are able to do the work they need to do.
Thank you. To those colleagues who have joined us, there is at your place a sheet that answers questions raised in prior meetings. And the Google Docs, that, questions that were submitted over the weekend or today are not addressed in this, but will be addressed tomorrow night. Ms. Gibson has, do you want to state it yourself, or do you let me summarize? Okay, if I miss something, you'll let me know. Okay. The three main things, substitute teachers, what are some ways we can address our needs in that area? Do we need to raise the STIP and what would that cost be? What would the cost be for a full-time sub in each school? The decompression of the assistant principal salary scale. At least a ballpark figure for what that would be. And she would also like to see the exact decompression amount for principals last year. And then she wasn't sure that in here anywhere, she did not see the cost for having a nurse in every school. Okay, Ms. Gibson.
Yes, I mean, that is a very fair recap. I think the overall sentiment is that I'm thankful to see the written description here, but I'm very eager to see dollar amounts applied across the board to the various line items here, so that the Board has that information and can consider those additions or potential subtractions based on, based on that input.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
I have a question for the Superintendent. We adjourned last, last meeting with some conversation about the pilot in 1.7. Do we know approximately how many students that we are anticipating would participate in next fiscal budget year in the, in the pilot for 1.1 point, action 1.7?
Action.
Action 1.7.
Not.
Action 1.
May I?
Yes.
Not at this time, only because, in fact, we had a conversation about this at our leadership team meeting today. We really want to dig into the student data to identify what exactly are we trying to solve here? And I think there are many different possible answers to that question. And so the amount we have is a placeholder amount. Our hope is that it addresses a significant enough portion, that it reduces the stress that many of our elementary schools are facing at this time. I just don't want to overpromise with an exact number. I will also note, we are hiring for the position to figure all this out, and I really want to make sure that we have a chance to get that person on board so they can run and do the work. And once that happens, I'm looking forward to coming back to the Board with more specifics on that.
Mr. Young.
Another question unrelated, I know some of my colleagues have introduced, or introduced inquiries relevant to an additional increase in compensation for, for teachers. We're planning on scaling up the teacher visit to residences to about 1,000 this year. Do we think that there is any opportunity to scale that up beyond that? Is that realistic? I mean, the reason I connected the two is because it's an opportunity to put more money in, in our teachers, teachers' pockets and still achieve that other objective, getting to 24,000. So I guess my question is regards, when do we, when do we think we can realistically get to 24,000 students in a year?
I'd really love to have Dr. Harris speak to that, she is ill this evening, so let me try to confer with her between now and tomorrow night's meeting and follow up.
Just anything you see in here, when you see something you want to speak about, just raise your hand.
Okay, thank you, just want to make sure that I'm clear. May I ask a question that may be on here? Or do you have to find that out myself?
No, you can ask anything you want.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. It may be on here, but last, our last meeting, we discussed the stormwater money, the difference there. And we allotted so much in, as a line item to pay that, pay towards the delinquency as well as moving forward. And I suggested, I asked that we consider that some of that money aligned would go towards maintenance fees in terms of supplies for our schools for the end of the school year, such as about $100,000. And I think $300,000 was originally listed. And since we don't have to pay that part of it, we have funds left, and I'm asking that a portion of that money be put in the, placed in the maintenance line item. Do you want me to elaborate why?
No, I recall that. That is not in this document, but we will for tomorrow have a summary of specific numeric additions or changes, and so we can capture that there as well.
I have a quick question about that. Now, have we already paid debt payment on that debt this year? No? So that gives us a little wiggle room in this year's budget, maybe we could put towards maintenance, because I see we're down to zero for this year. I realize that would be some sort of transfer thing.
Yeah, we didn't budget for any arrears payment for this year, we just budgeted enough to pay our current.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of quick things, and then I'll probably want you to come back to me so I can ask some really hard-hitting questions. But first, the Board questions and answers seem to have been posted to tomorrow's meeting, so it'd be great to have those put for tonight. And then I tried to pull up the salary scales for the nurses, but the link doesn't appear to be behaving, so is there any chance we can have that sent out to us as well?
Yep.
Mr. Young.
Question, this is relevant to page five. And I understand that as of February the 10th, we're at 17, 17.5, last year was 16.1, chronic absenteeism. What did, remind me, what did we end the year, what do we end last academic year at?
We ended. We ended last academic year at 84% of what we would call good attendance, or to look at it in the reverse, 16% of our students were chronically absent at the end of the last academic year.
Ms. Page.
Question. This is on page two. Regarding the preschool instructional leads, converting those positions into formal principal roles. So my question is about the principal director. So is still the principal director for all the pre-k centers? Okay.
Is there an answer?
Yes, sorry, I nodded, I did not speak, my apologies.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. So I've got a few for you, if that's all right. The first is with respect to the substitute teachers. I'm glad to get information about how much we pay per day compared to other counties like Henrico. I do think I'd like to see some, a little bit more insight in how we, how we, into how we address substitute shortages. So I don't know if saying we're going to pay $89 or $88.50 or $90 is necessarily going to, to do much to, to move the needle and help there, but I would like to see a little bit more information there. The next question I have is with a request, with respect to actions 3.1 and 3.2. And that's page three. So this is related to trauma-informed and restorative practice leads, which I am excited to see. But I do assume that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do assume that these staff members will be taking on sort of this role on top of their day-to-day work in the school. So I'm just curious to know whether we think that is sufficient to drive meaningful change there? Is that someone who's just, who's going to provide additional PD, or is that someone who's going to be able to come into a classroom and provide support if a student is being disruptive or needs extra support? So I like the concept, and I just want to make sure that, that that will actually help us drive change and provide significant additional support. The next thing I want to talk about, and I don't want to hijack this, so I'll go to one of the things that I think is pretty important, which is with respect to the high-priority list of schools. So I am encouraged, and I do appreciate that we want to prioritize our schools and that we want to provide resources where they're most needed. I, I do think that we have significant needs at schools that may not have, may not be deemed high priority, and we certainly have significant needs at schools that may have been on that earlier list with the 60% disadvantaged student threshold that may, from what it looks like, it looks like that may be a moving target. So, so I, I want to make sure that we're putting resources where they're needed most, but I also want to have an idea of what non-priority schools need and what they're saying that they need, so that can be included in the budget as well, because I don't want schools with legitimate needs not to, to even really be encapsulated in this, in this feedback and, and our initial budget request. And then the last, one of the last things at least, is with respect to the CIP Planning and Construction Funds, that's on page seven. I do think we're probably going to have to have more discussion about what we think those funds should be used for, whether we will be in a position to begin initial design work. I'm not sure if we've heard any, any sort of feedback from the city about whether they think funding additional school construction in the near future is likely, but it would be good to, to have some dialogue with the city so we can understand whether that could be an effective use of those dollars.
Mr. Young.
Do we have a, how are we, do we have a spreadsheet, are we tracking council grade city schools? There are 2018 audit and the recommendations there to, particularly those recommendation, many, many of them had a fiscal impact. I think, for example, their recommendation pertinent to procurement office and P-CAR, something that we, we have adopted. But do we have a framework or, or some kind of spreadsheet where we're tracking what the progress is and, and the relevance to, to budget?
Yes, we do have a tracker. I've since passed that off to our auditor, though, and he's been working from, from that as he has his meetings with my teams.
Mr. Young.
If it, if it's a will of the group, I suspect, yeah, I would love to see, thank you, Felicia.
So this went to the, our newly hired auditor? Ms. Page.
Yes, this goes back to on page three. Right, part two, about the substitute teachers. Can we get data that will show the schools that have the most requests for substitute teachers? Because I know in looking at some of the listings from the county, they are mainly highlighted for the hard staff schools. So that may not be the case for all our schools, so just to see that information disclosed for the most request of substitute teachers, because there may be some schools that are easily identified as there's a need for. one staff position for substitute teachers.
And I would just stick in there. I know sometimes they have subs, they just sort of call automatically. But that goes in the system too. So they would be included in how many subs are actually needed, even if they don't have to call in and ask for them because they know Ms. Wilson is always happy to come to your school.
Right, but.
Not necessarily others. So but it's documented.
Yeah, there are schools that we know have a high demand or high need for substitute teachers, meaning teachers calling on or.
Yeah.
Well, in case of need, but a lot of times it's the hard to staff schools. And in most cases, when it's a hard to staff school, this pay is more.
In other counties.
In other counties, right. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
In other counties.
In other counties.
Hard staff.
Okay, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thinking about that as well, when I saw the eighty-eight dollars, I'm thinking, wait a minute. But then I also thought that once you've substituted, you've served as a guest teacher for so many days, your pay changes. I don't recall, for instance, if a teacher goes out on a turn to leave. And you've done so many days, you get long-term sub, you get additional funds, which most persons try to get long-term positions if you're a substitute teacher. The challenge is when you have, for instance, professional development, teachers aren't always out because of illnesses, but also because of professional development. Be it they're attending a conference or whatever else. The challenge is if you have ten schools all going to the same conference, would you want to go to a school that has many challenges? Or do you want to go to a country club school? That's what I call them, okay? So, and there is a difference, there is a difference. So oftentimes, you may have guest teachers in place to be at a school with lots of, of needs. Whereas people may choose then at the last minute to go to the other school if they find it's an opening and leave you just out there without a guest teacher. So I'm in full agreement of getting to the point of a conversation to hire a teacher or two as a substitute to stay on board at those particular schools that are hard to get substitutes. I have two other questions, if I may. I am so glad under, on page three, dreams for RPS priority three, action three point six, student celebrations. It's so important that we're mindful of all of our children's needs. Many of our children only get acknowledged for good attendance or having a pleasant attitude for the day of the week. And they need to be, or just trying harder to improve his or her grades. The only pat's on the back they get, or the announcement over the PA system, or a celebration, is what the school is giving them. So it makes a big difference when children know that they are appreciated and they are acknowledged for doing their hard work. And in hard to, challenged, schools are in challenging environments. It's important, that's something that has to be done daily. You can't wait till the end of the six weeks or end of the nine weeks or end of the year. That's something, I'm not talking about candy. It can be a pencil, it can be a sticker, it can be a pizza party. It can be something that I've seen children take home gifts of money from sincerely, from companies giving children a gift card or whatever. And rather than children spending on themselves, I've had students that tell me, Ms. Burke, this will help my mom get her groceries this weekend. All right? Some children don't have a place to lay their heads at night. So I'm glad to see this in place because we must celebrate what many of us take for granted. I'm thinking about a student right now in South Side at a high school who never had a birthday celebration until a CIS coordinator gave him a cupcake with a candle on top. He'd never, ever had a birthday celebration. And he was a top student and a top basketball player at that particular high school. So every little bit of pat on the back, children need that. And we do too as adults, but children need that. So thank you for keeping that, and I support that one wholeheartedly, due to my experience, thank you.
I'm sorry. Dr. Sapini?
I have a few questions. Please forgive me if this was already asked in my absence. For one, the principal director for pre, preschool. Why is that? Considering we have other principal directors and there's only but so many preschool centers? Also, two point five, director of equity. Have you, have you seen that somewhere else, or no? I don't know if that's anywhere else.
I know this one in, this one in Henrico.
Whatever have you, I've never heard before. Four point eight, as far as the out-of-school time coordinator. Who's currently doing that now, coordinating all the different partnerships? Also, I'm slightly confused with the chronic absenteeism. One of my concerns with that is that we are at the end of February, well, middle of February. You said that the data would come out to us in March sometime? April? But schools are in June, so what can we possibly do?
So you would like it to be sooner?
It would be nice. I mean, I thought we had agreed that we would get it every. Yes. There was something, I'll come get back to me.
Okay.
The literacy curriculum.
Literacy curriculum?
Yes. Do you know what you want it to look like? Okay, one point six, the decrease from one million to three hundred thousand for the newcomers? We have such an influx and such a need, I'm just wondering why that was, we need more help. And I have a few other ones that I sent on the, what, I mean, the Google.
Doctor, could you come and speak to the principal director for preschool? The literacy curriculum and the thinking around decreasing from one million to three hundred for the newcomer academy pilot?
Sure. First, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Burke, Board Members, Superintendent Camaras. To, first on the pre-K centers and the principal director there. Most of our pre-K centers are currently the size of some of our smaller elementary schools, around two hundred to two hundred and fifty students. In our budget, we, and it is our plan to max out our enrollment at, by adding another three hundred slots. So we plan to increase enrollment at our pre-K centers where space is allowable. And then we'll be increasing, placing students in other buildings where needed in terms of school buildings. So we do believe that the instructional leadership required for a staff that large that serves students of that number, we really do need a full principal. In particular, when we look at our kindergarten readiness data, we just got data back that suggests that just forty, forty, forty-four percent of our kindergarteners enter ready for kindergarten based on the, the Virginia Kinder Readiness Program data that we just received. We're making a dramatic investment in early childhood. And while I believe that our early childhood educators are doing a great job, the truth is we have not invested in the level of instructional leadership that that investment requires. So really, we want to make sure we are getting the full return on that investment by ensuring instructional quality, not just enrollment and attendance. So that's the primary focus for the principal role, upgraded slightly from an instructional lead. We, the, in terms of a principal director, to, as we look at our early childhood strategy, to expand our strategic plan calls for early childhood and to increase those efforts, not just in preschool, but really birth to three. And that requires a whole set of work. So our director of early childhood is not only focused on, you know, VPI or Head Start or just preschool, our, our director is also focused on, first, bringing those programs together and ensuring that all of our families have a universally high-quality experience, but also the operations, the accounting that, that all requires, given the significance of a federal grant in terms of Head Start. And then also partnering with the city and other providers to expand early childhood beyond preschool. So there's a lot of work in that director's portfolio that goes beyond instructional leadership. If the director only needed to focus on instruction, I do not think we would need a pre-K director. But given that the early childhood director needs to focus on a whole set of issues that align to early childhood education, that includes but goes beyond pre-K, that is why we're suggesting the addition of a pre-K director. Because, a school director, because there are five sites and then we have teachers in pre-K classrooms spread across the division in our school classrooms that are currently not managed by our K-five principals, given their scope. So that's the rationale.
Does each preschool center have a principal or someone that's a leader in the building?
We currently, two out of our five sites are staffed with an instructional lead. We, in scoping the role, we just got approval, we wanted to upgrade that role to hire the remaining three. And we've just received approval from the VDOE, so that role is now posted. So we, we hope to staff those roles as soon as we're able to.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you said we just got approval to hire, so are those budgeted positions at this point?
Those are position.
Sorry, just to clarify, the, the approval was to convert them into principal positions.
Thank you.
All five are budgeted, but not budgeted at the principal rate. So in the FY twenty-one budget, there is an increase to accommodate the shift from a lead to a formal principal.
Gotcha. And then, just with respect to staffing for, for pre-K, we got some feedback from teachers who came in earlier to talk about specials teachers for pre-K. And I'm curious to know if we have, and I feel like a board member too expressed interest in that in the past, but I'm curious to know whether we have thoughts about, whether we think those are necessary and what, what those costs, what it would cost to, to at least provide some support for, for those students.
We, it is part of our long-term vision to add those electives or specials to the pre-K experience. We, we feel that there's a significant amount of work to do this year just on establishing our basic educational program and aligning what the student experience looks like across all of our centers and classrooms. So we have not yet put that in the budget for this year. But we do, we do want to, I think this is also an orientation around treating our pre-K centers like schools. And that would, that would require adding those positions in. I think it's our view that we want to get some fundamentals right this year and then start to add those in in the twenty twenty-two school year, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Ms. Paige, I'm sorry, Mr. Young, and then Ms. Page.
My question isn't per se for Tracy, so if you have a question for Trace, I'll defer for the moment.
This is more of a statement. So I've heard from several teachers in our pre-K centers, particularly over in the South Side, that those positions are needed. Because of the various demands at our pre-K centers and various, various issues have come about, not easily been addressed. So I definitely have heard the need and, like you just stated, brought in, I guess, whether focusing on that early, the foundation, pre-K, BPI, the whole gamut. So, so that's mainly my statement in support of that.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question pertains to what we anticipate from the state. I think the numbers when we last discussed it looked like, Matthew reported, year-over-year, absent any RPS changes, we likely could anticipate something like nine point nine million dollar, roughly, year-over-year. But then there was another nine million that was contingent on, on us in dollars that have been proposed in, in your ask. Do we have, do we have a good handle on? I don't know that I've seen, and forgive me if, if, if I missed something, but I don't know if I've seen a document that specifically identifies what, what that nine million looks like and where, where it relates to the, the document we are provided. So, so in other words, I know the nine point nine, I'm not asking about that, but that those additional dollars, if we draw down all of the Commonwealth funding, where the dollars in this budget is located to, to leverage all those monies?
Yeah, so I don't know if your numbers are exactly right. The, the total amount from the governor's budget that we would see if we maximized our funds is seventeen point six, which is close to the numbers you've been talking about. The lion's share of new spending that we would have to do to get the full state match would be on the K-three size, class size reduction. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think it was about two point something million additional dollars. It's in our budget proposal, so I can pull that up. In addition, fully maximizing the reading specialist money, which as I recall would involve about an eight hundred or so thousand dollar new spend on our part. There's also the match to expand VPI and the match to expand ESL teachers. So my best recollection is that it's more in the four to five million dollar range of new local dollars that we would be spending to draw down all of the state funds. And those are the biggest buckets, but, but we'll go back and take a look at that and include that in the document.
Mr. Young?
Just a brief.
Then Ms. Gibson.
Just a brief follow-up. I recognize there was a consensus at the last meeting, I think, to do some of that prioritization subsequent what we'll send downstairs. I will, again, encourage us to do it the other way around. But for the purpose of this discussion, my two cents would be that we begin with what the superintendent, among some other important elements, that one of the priorities that we would begin with what the superintendent just spoke to, i.e. that approximately four to five million dollars to leverage what amounts to arguably about a two, two-for-one match, approximately.
Did you want me to address the other two questions?
Oh, sure.
There were just two other questions that, Dr. Sapini, you had around the literacy curriculum. So you could find more detail in our RFP, which is on our website, available for public review. But in specifically, we are looking to adopt a K-eight curriculum for ELA that includes, that certainly is first and foremost aligned. certainly is first and foremost aligned to the state standards, and that aligns to the research on reading achievement, and what is required elements of reading at each level. What you need in early literacy and K-2 typically is different than what the research shows for upper elementary and middle school. We are looking for a curriculum that is comprehensive, in that it outlines not just a textbook, but really units and lessons, and suggested, and texts, student text sets, what we call anchor text sets, and, and that it also embeds, significantly embeds, writing. So those are some of the high-level features that we're looking for in our curriculum. And happy to talk, you know, in more detail offline about that, but those are the, the highlight features. And then in terms of our newcomer academy, the reason for that difference, again, when we were imagining this over a year ago, I think we certainly know that we have a large challenge here, but our, our programming, our, our programming and our vision for our programming at our high schools has also strengthened since that time. So, since that time, we've changed our high school course of study to better serve the needs of ESL students, and this was through our transcript audit, but through that time, I believe we are going to, we are serving and capturing some of our newcomers, our English language learners, more effectively through our revised course sequences at the high school level. So that's one big thing, is I think we, I, you know, we made a lot of progress, and I think we've got a lot more to offer to students just by the core day, we still have a lot more to do, but I think there's a route there that wasn't here a year ago. And then, secondly, we would like to start small, in the spirit of doing things well. We would like to start with the, with a group of about 30 freshmen. And, you know, when we thought about that number initially, this was prior to hiring staff and really thinking about priorities, and so we want to make sure that we're taking on what we can do well and doing it right. We also think that there are students who can be served by the secondary success centers. So there are multiple paths that we think students can access. And so the, feeling the urgency, feeling the need to put everything into one bucket of the newcomer academy, I think that was the original thinking, and now I see multiple pathways for serving those students. But the short answer is, we're starting with a, and, and we were to design a pilot, we just think we can do it for less, with more information now.
Do you have data for that? You said, you've seen some successes?
Well, I think we have avenues, it's in place, so I'll have data at the end of this year, once the school year ends, to see how students are faring in those programs that... So what I said, we have, we've made progress on a number of program offerings for students. I think the data will tell us more as we, and as we round out the school year, in terms of how students are doing in those high school courses, and how many students are accessing the success centers.
Ms. Gibson, and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I just wanted to note a couple of other things that I had mentioned in our last meeting. One was to see the specific pay scales for custodians and the bus drivers, which we, I presume we're used to generate the, those, those line item amounts. I do think it's imperative that we see more details regarding the transportation plan. I also requested to see the line item that we have for classroom furniture, what that was based on, so that we could review that. And then, along all those same lines, I saw that there were a number of FOIA requests that came in for the line item budget, and so my question is, I presume that that exists, does the line item budget now exist, and if so, can that be provided prior to tomorrow's meeting?
Mr. Gervis, before Ms. Burke? Did you want to...
Go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Burke? I didn't know if you wanted to respond.
That'd be great.
I'm glad to. I just didn't want to cut anybody off. On the line item budget, I don't believe that it does exist yet at this time. It is typically produced once we have clarity from the board as to what the additions or subtractions from this process would generate, and so typically, once the board takes action, then the finance office, or the budget office, turns it all into that comprehensive document, which then gets sent to the city, but if I'm mistaken, I'd ask Linda to correct me. Is that about right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And is that, just for clarity's sake, has that always been the practice, or has that been a shift for this administration? So I want to make sure that we haven't changed anything.
No, the, the shift happened 12 months ago, last year, when we produced the superintendent's proposed budget. Otherwise, this would normally precise, that's the wrong word, I can't think of the right word, suffice for the superintendent's budget.
Ms. Gibson?
I would love to see that, that document.
This, you, you have this document.
So that is the same, that's the same thing that we're looking at.
I just pulled it into Excel and made it bigger so I could read it. But it was absolutely what was loaded to Board Docs. It's the same data, the same rhetoric, the same columns, just bigger so I can read it.
Yeah. So, so my request is, since the last year, we did get that line item budget, and that was, there was lots of concern about the timing of it. I do think that it would be, behoove us to have that document prior to our vote in the same fashion as we did last year.
Uh, is this something that, this would be a very big ask in terms of time, in a week, basically, a little over a week. Is this something that, can I see nods or head shakes?
Just, just to clar, may I clarify?
Yes.
Yes, so the full, the full, uh...
Line item, full budget.
Yes, the full line item budget book, the 123-page thing, um, yes, what, we did produce that after we received the mark from the city, which we are several weeks, if not months, away from that. That being said, we will, my understanding is, we, we do produce a document of that nature that gets sent on to the city, so what I'm glad to commit to the board is that once the board votes on the 18th on the approved, not adopted, budget, and that is then turned into the full budget book to be submitted to the city, of course, that will be shared with the school board and can serve as the foundation for the next round of discussions when we find out what our mark is from the city and from the state, quite frankly, and then we have to have many more conversations about what to do if we do not get that mark. So, glad to do that. I, I do think it would be very challenging under this timeframe to be able to produce that full book in time for Monday's meeting. Again, I do also want to note, just to be clear, do, or Tuesday's meeting, doing so would also be a departure from how RPS has managed the budget process for as long as Lynn has been here, which is far longer than I have been here. But if that is, if that is the will of the board...
But you don't think we do.
I serve at the pleasure of the board, and we'll figure out how to comply.
Ms. Burke?
So if I'm understanding correctly, we will get the information that we're asking, but we will get the information after we've received the go-ahead from the city? That's what you're stating?
Let me clarify. Everything that we are proposing to change in the budget, everything, is in the document that was uploaded to Board Docs...
Okay.
...on February 3rd, when we started the budget conversation. The one that Lynn was just holding, the one that you all have. Everything that we are proposing to change. If it's not in there, we are not proposing to change it, period. That is the comprehensive list of changes. I just want to be absolutely clear about this. And so, uh, now, that's one. Two, we've had a lot of discussion. Tomorrow, we'll present some modifications to that based upon the conversation that we've had up to this point, so that the board can see that and weigh in on that. My hope is that that gets us 99% of the way there to what the board would likely approve next Tuesday. There is a lot of work, though, to take all that and put in all the individual line-by-line changes that are compiled in this 50-page document into the Excel spreadsheet, and the document that Lynn does to generate the 100-and-whatever-page document. And so, I, I'm asking for grace, for staff's time, there's nothing that would be in that document that this board has not already seen, literally nothing. So all that it would be doing is a rather extensive Excel and otherwise endeavor for the team that in, as long as Lynn has been here, is always done after the board approves the budget in preparation to then send it on to the mayor and the city.
Okay. Ms. Burke, did you have something else? Because I had you...
I did have something else, but it's not pertaining to this.
No, but I mean, about, you, you are on my list for next.
I did have something, but it wasn't pertaining to this.
I know.
Do you want me to ask that now?
Yes, go ahead.
I was trying to address Mrs., Dr. Epp, when she was here beforehand, if she could come back. Something that was on the list earlier. And that was in reference to the AP courses, the dual enrollment courses, and we stated we would address the IB later. We would, I was just trying to get a feel for how many students were in dual enrollment. We talked about that at the last, was that already addressed in here, or I missed it?
I do not believe that was addressed.
At some point, because as we plan for our, I know you, you all have already talked about adding math classes or composition classes, but I also would like to know how many students are currently involved in the, I think Jonathan stated 40 for Virginia State at our compact meeting. But overall, how many students are involved in J. Sargent Reynolds or wherever regarding dual enrollment? Because that also is similar, because they get college credit before going to college, as you well know.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we can get a breakdown of that, I think we need to always have that before us as well.
Yes, ma'am.
We have AP, we also need to list dual enrollment, because they have to go through a process to get in.
Yes.
Okay.
I can provide that with the follow-up data from the last board meeting.
Thank you.
You want to go? All right, Ms. Dorr?
So, in regards to the big budget, the 150-page budget, I think the, the question that I have is related to, I understand that we're talking here about incremental changes, so any increases or decreases to that budget are reflected in what we've been provided. The, the one thing that I don't think we have visibility to, and I'm wondering if we could figure out a way to solve for, is any impact to school size changes. So, for example, Thomas Jefferson is getting a number of new students related to rezoning, and so I believe that their per pupil allocation is going to change. I also know at Thomas Jefferson that some of the, like, they have some classes with 35 students, I'm just speaking of schools in my, situations in my district, I suspect that some other people might have similar situations with their schools, and so I do think that seeing the, the large budget would give us insight to just see how those changes are happening, but if, I would welcome a different, your thoughts on how we sort of address that, some of those changes.
Yeah, so, if we were to produce the, the big budget, you wouldn't see any changes in the school budgets, because we will ultimately make those adjustments based on enrollment, which we don't have for next year right now. So yes, there will be additional FTEs, maybe fewer FTEs, their supply number will grow or fall based upon the enrollment, but if we were to produce the book by Tuesday, you wouldn't see any of that. I would also note, there are dozens of school-based positions that we have proposed, we don't know where they'll go just yet, and so as we get closer to next school year, let's just take the, the 12 advanced placement teachers. Well, they wouldn't go to TJ, because TJ's IB, but that's going to show up ultimately as more FTEs at Armstrong, with, Marshall, and so on. Same thing with the ESL teachers, and the art, foreign language, and music teachers, and so on. So, I don't know that we're really able to provide any more insight into that, other than to say things will shift based on enrollment, and all the school-based stuff that's in the budget that we're proposing for the strategic plan and elsewhere will wind up ultimately on the school-based budgets. If there is a particular need at a school that you feel is not represented somewhere else in all of our discussions, that would be great to know. The one that's popping up in mind is the, the YMCA fees for open, for the physical ed, that's just a very school-specific thing that we're, we're putting in. If there are other things like that, that would be super helpful to know, and then we can either add in a line item, or figure out how to address that.
Ms. Page?
So clarity. So the information that we already have in our possession regarding the budget, and the different line items related to the priority, streams for RPS, and the additional, make sure I have the right terminology, what is the additional?
Basic needs and adjustments, yes, the other stuff.
So, everything that we already have in our possession that will help us to make an informed decision to be able to approve the budget, is this big, the binder that we're speaking of, is it going to provide us, provide us more information, or additional information than we already have? I guess I'm just trying to, I'll be comparing apples to apples, apples to oranges.
Well, basically, here's how I would characterize it. If you take the current year's big old budget, and you add the $40 million of stuff in the proposal, that's what you'd be voting on. Because everything that we're proposing to add is in the document that you've seen. So it's all on...
So we already have it.
Yeah, yeah. And with the caveat that tomorrow, we'll discuss a few adjustments based upon the feedback that you've shared, there were things that folks wanted to add in, I'll just take, like, the sub thing for a second, and other little adjustments. So what we've given, plus those adjustments, that's everything.
And so after we approve the budget, and then we get the final numbers from the city...
And state.
And state, and federal, they'll be going back through this process, massaging, takeaway key.
Yeah, I mean, in a best-case scenario, let's say we, we ask for a total of 40 million, state and local, and we get 40 million, great, everything we've asked for is in there. If it turns out to be 50 million, then there's 10 more we can spend, though I don't anticipate that happening. But if it comes back at 20 million, then half of what we've been discussing would have to come off the table, and so...
Okay.
That we would discuss, though... That we would discuss, though, in the sort of April-May timeframe, once we have clarity on all those other numbers.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Sure.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Title, all the title programs, federal programs, because Ms. Page just mentioned title, federal programs again. We do, I would like to see, as we discussed at the last meeting, what federal funds we are receiving, under what umbrellas. This is one for tutorial services.
Like the overlaps.
There's one for, right, there may be some overlap, or we may need to make up the difference, especially with the instructional piece. One for preliminary involvement is, just to see what that is, that would be most helpful before making a final decision on what we're voting for. Does that make?
I'm more than happy to give a summary of all the different federal special revenue funds. I will see, it is. It is, those funds are not like a RPS slush fund, I can't think of a better word for it, they have very prescriptive uses, so it's not as if we could say, hey, could we do the, for example, subpay out of, you know, title whatever? Well, no, for a couple of reasons. One, there are only certain schools that it would go to, but two, there's a rule called supplement, not supplant, so we can't swap things. Anyway, it's, but we can give all the, yeah.
You know, I understand.
I know, yeah. That was for the, that was for the public.
Yeah, but overall, right, because if it stays, it's for instruction or for Title One reading teachers or math teachers, just as we're adding additional. Teachers, just want to see what the difference is and who already is being covered. Those title schools, Title One schools, those persons' salaries are paid for through Title One for the specialists, and now the additional specialists we're talking about hiring will not be covered on, that's what I'm asking, will they be covered under Title One funds or they would not? Apparently, they would not be, otherwise, it wouldn't be proposed in this budget. So, I just want to see, let's say, school blue in Churchill is receiving funds for a Title One math teacher or a Title One reading teacher, then we have the opportunity through this budget, because of our needs, to hire two more teachers, and also looking at those schools that don't have the Title One coverage, just being fair across the board, equitable, all right? I'm thinking about a particular couple of schools that may not be Title One, but they really need to receive Title One assistance. So, I'd just like to see the, I know we can't use it for, this is a federal government, I'm not going to jail for you all, but being mindful also, I just want to see just what it is, because there is sometimes overlap. So, thank you.
And did we spend down?
And did we spend down, good point, very good point, otherwise, money goes back. And that has happened, maybe not under this administration, but it has happened in the past.
Yes.
A lot of money that we could be utilizing. So, we just need to see that.
Mr. Young?
I appreciate this conversation, and I've meant to on a few occasions, and so I haven't, so I'll take the opportunity now, but I've meant to commend the superintendent for a more honest and transparent discussion relevant to the entire budget, past administra- without naming any administrations, past administrations have played this little song and dance about what the real budget is, and to the superintendent's credit, we are discussing the entire, the current fiscal year is approximately four hundred million dollars. I never really understood why folks would talk about and would publish a number like three hundred and eleven million dollars, when the real budget, the real RPS operations budget is four hundred million, or this year, I think it's three ninety-eight and change, and I think it really, in the past, that really did a disservice and misjustice to what we're responsible for, so grateful for the honest and genuine conversation about the real RPS operations budget for a year of four hundred million. Thanks.
Well, I'll just say that the three hundred and eleven and change is our local and state money, and the special adds, makes it go up to three hundred and ninety-eight and a half. So, yeah, our total budget is that, but that's, it's several pots, and I appreciate the breakdown of the pots on page twenty-two. And it is interesting about the title funds, because when we write the grants, we identify the needs that we have in Richmond and the way that it will meet. But we do have schools that are not Title One schools, and I guess, I don't know, I'm not sure why, because it seems to me that every school in Richmond should be a Title One school, but I do know that in the county, sometimes they can, they can spend different, the same money, but in a completely different way, based on their grant request, but they have different needs than what we have. We have very specific needs from Title One, and they don't necessarily need those same things that we need, but I do look forward to the breakdown of, years ago, you know, we used to get library books, they get library books still in Henrico. We don't apparently need that as much as some other places do, don't get me started. But anyway, so our grants are written for our needs and are funded that way, but the grant is written, again, every year, yeah, so it would be good to see that. Yes, Ms. Burke?
Being mindful that with Title One schools, from what I understand, it's forty or forty-two percent of your population has to be based on, is it forty-two percent or forty percent?
I believe it's forty.
Forty percent of your population must be in a position of, I don't know whether it's still free or reduced lunch, or, but we do have schools in the city of Richmond, we don't, most of our schools are Title One, but we do have a few schools that are not Title One, because the population is, they can utilize the funds, but because of having many children who do not come from households that fall into that, that's why they're not Title One schools.
I just don't know how they figure that out.
I don't understand how you don't know that.
Yes.
I can just briefly address, so.
Country club.
It is true that not all, most, though not all of our schools qualify for Title One funding, and it is accurate that forty percent is the cutoff, but when you think about funding forty percent or a school at ninety percent, those are very different funding allocations. Traditionally, those are cut into two buckets, you could do what's called targeted, improved, targeted plan or comprehensive. We, as a school division, do comprehensive, given the larger size of most of our schools. Currently, we fund schools that are sixty percent and above in our plan, and we do that comprehensive. Part of that is due to, frankly, the advisement of the state, the legacy, targeted improvement is very difficult, it can't be done, but it requires a very onerous tracking and compliance and monitoring process, because you have to ensure every single dollar is only spent on those particular students, whereas when you do comprehensive, you do not have to do that level of tracking, it's for all the students in the school. Given the division's legacy of not spending down dollars prior to this administration, and that's one of the challenges, that's one of the areas that the State Department has, continues to monitor with the DOE, it is advised that we are not in a place to even attempt targeting, but even if we were, I would probably not recommend it for a whole host of reasons. That said, we are revisiting our calculations and assumptions to ensure that some of the schools that currently aren't qualified as Title One do receive some form of Title One funding, given their numbers. For example, Huguenot and TJ are currently not considered Title One, though their numbers, while not as high as Armstrong or John Marshall for students from low-income background, they do have a, two-thirds of their students are, so we will be making some of those adjustments. The one other thing I just want to acknowledge about the grant, the Title One grant in particular, is while, yes, we do reset that grant every year, and we have the opportunity to revise that strategy, and we've been doing that over the last two years to align it to our strategic priorities and direction, the bulk of that grant is still heavily weighted towards full-time, permanent personnel, and so while we can make pivots, I want to acknowledge that whenever you're talking about sort of longstanding roles that have been around for a long time, and such a large amount of personnel, those would be significant changes. So, while you certainly, we certainly have the ability to no longer include funding certain positions in our title app, those are just more, you know, personnel changes en masse are, have more complexity. So, we certainly have flexibility, we can certainly share with you where our priorities are for the year, I think you'll find that they're consistent with our strategic direction.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Dr. Epp, so regarding Huguenot, so when we have, you said there are possibly more flexibility with the state to support the needs of Huguenot?
We are looking, we, and we've been in discussion with the Federal Programs Office and with our Grants Office over the last year to evaluate the eligibility of both Huguenot and TJ for inclusion in the Title One grant application, so we plan to add them in this year. That's what we'll be doing.
Okay.
So, that will mean some additional funding for those schools aligned to allowable expenses for Title One.
Yeah, because that's, that's concerning, very concerning.
So, we'll be adding that in this year.
Okay. Ms. Dorr?
I have a, something related to another topic, so.
Okay.
Folks have, okay, okay. I had a question about the Futures Center, so I see in the document, it says that they're not going away, but I don't see in the budget where they're, where we're adding the employees from the Futures Center, so I'm just curious if you could clarify that.
Sure, it is in the big budget document. This one, we have a chunk of money, I think it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the transition, those are the FTEs.
Do I see seventy-five thousand?
Oh, sorry, I misrepresented, my apologies. So, here's how it works, the city currently gives three hundred and seventy, or whatever it is, to the foundation, which then pays the salaries. The city this year is going to give the money to us, we're going to keep paying the salaries. The seventy-five was because there are some administrative costs that the foundation currently has, we're not clear how essential they are, but we put in that seventy-five to cover the gap for those costs. So, all those employees will be coming over, and in fact, our benefits are much better than the foundation's benefits, so they're all actually going to be getting a better package.
Great, I would, can we just put that in the, whatever our request is?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just circling back to the documentation, because it is really important. So, I went on Board Docs, and I've been looking at the counties, because I remembered last year when we were going through this process, you know, comparing with other municipalities, and I would encourage us all to look and see what our peer communities are doing, because I think that that speaks to, you know, standard practice. So, just, so for this board, last year, what happened was, when we voted on the budget document, we received a thirty-eight-page document that had a lot more detail than the document that we've reviewed thus far, and then there was a two hundred and twenty-eight page document that was shared with the board that was not made public, that was done when we voted on the needs-based budget. In Hanover, they've released a full budget document that's a hundred and fifty-eight pages, Henrico has released a budget document that's a hundred and fifty-five pages, Chesterfield has a really cool Google document, so it's got the full line item list, it's accessible to the public, and each of the line items that speaks to initiatives such as a reading program, then links to a document several pages long in some cases, that has a full detailed breakdown of each and every line item that is being proposed. So, so those peer, you know, districts are our neighbors in this case, you know, have done that work, it is made available to the public, thus, I was able to look it up just now, and I think it is critical that prior to adopting this budget, that we have that type of detail as well.
Again, I just want to clarify, the board will have all that detail before adopting the budget, the final budget, well in advance. This is, though we are now talking about approving the initial ask to go to the city, so once, again, we have the number and then respond to the number, whatever that is, whether it's up or down, that will then be turned into a, an extremely detailed, full book that the board will have and can fully review prior to adoption, absolutely.
Ms. Page?
I've got my question.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. So. Appreciate this document, we'll stay, and I'm really looking forward to tomorrow, to receive additional information that I think will be critical as we make decisions, and what I hope we will see, and that we won't have to keep asking for it, is just definitely as we talk about positions, there are a number of positions that are being, one either introduced, or there is a salary adjustment, but we have asked for these positions to, either we get a list of them specifically, you know, what are the new ones, and the ones with the salary adjustment, just so we can clearly see it, as opposed to say, okay, wait a minute, you know, China, just so we can be very clear. Also, I would tell you, what is a little concerning with regards to, it's on page six, the question is on page six, the response is on page seven, will we actually spend all of the FY twenty dreams for RPS funds? And the response, though, when we get close, we will likely not spend all of these funds, we will either propose a spend plan for the board or hold these resources for a larger fund balance. I think this is, we do need a spend plan, and I think we need to see it, we need to know, how much are we going to be spending, and how much really can we subtract from what is being proposed in the FY twenty-one budget, proposed.
We won't know right now how much will remain, in part because we literally just got the money from council, so a lot of things are in the works in terms of RFPs and whatnot, but before we adopt a budget, we will certainly know, and we will bring a proposal for modifications, though, again, I think we will get close, so I don't think we're talking about millions of dollars, I think we're talking about a couple of hundred thousand, which is certainly still significant money, but we'll know a little bit further on how much we have there. I did want to make just one more note, where you see the salary adjustments, we're actually not adjusting anybody's salary, we're just adjusting the budget to reflect the actual salary.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that was clear.
The budget, right, sorry, wrong terminology, but the bottom, for me, though, it is just, it's a bit, it is confusing.
Okay.
For me. So, and it's been confusing from the beginning, so we'd like just some clarity on that, and I think with this whole, whether we have the hundred-and-fifty-page budget document versus what we have right here, what we have right here are the suggested changes, adds, what have you, and we have talked before about looking at some other things that we might want to say, hey, is this working, is it not working? I'm just going to give you an example, and I don't mean to pick on the. you an example, and I don't mean to pick on this program, but it's just one that comes to my mind. For example, the Aspire Program. How, what, you know, the cost, is it, is it effective? Is it not effective? Are we using it the way we should or not? So these types of things. Is that something that can be repurposed? I don't know. But, you know, looking at the larger budget to, and those are things, I guess, we'll just have to go back and look at the
The binder, yeah.
Budget document to get that type of information. But to me, it's just that's, that's where all of that comes in, so you can look at things in totality.
If I may?
Yes.
On that point, we did a lot of that last year, as, as the board can recall, going line by line, cutting, repurposing and whatnot. I think at this point where we are with the budget, any significant changes, let's just take Aspire, for example, would be wrapped up in our work to create a new vision for all of our alternative education programs. I would agree with you. There are likely savings to be had, but also reinvestments to be made.
Right.
And I'm looking forward to proposing that in next year's budget because we will have, hopefully on staff, an individual to lead that work going forward and help us think about what that would look like for next year. And we'll continue to do that as we kind of make our way through the strategic plan. So there's, beyond what we have proposed, plus any changes additions that we discuss tomorrow, there's nothing else that we're currently proposing in terms of, of changes.
Right. And I, and I just want to highlight, I didn't use the word repurpose, so not to take away, but to repurpose.
Understood.
So that's, you know, I want to be clear with that. And, and speaking of alternative programs, I think before we had mentioned that there is, there, we have been made privy to a plan from maybe two years ago that we would like to see information on.
For the elementary?
For elementary and for, and for secondary as well. And that's important for the next meeting. Can I do that?
I'm, I'm sorry. What, I'm sorry. What was that?
Yes, yes. Oh, Michael. Yes, yes. Maybe I'm just talking low. Okay, I'm sorry.
We are not, to be transparent, we, we are not going to be in a position to talk about new alternative programs at our next school board meeting. So this, again, this is work that
I thought was in there.
We have, yeah, we have put aside some funds for it. But again, we need, frankly, to hire the individual to help us sift through all the various proposals that have been put forth, along with additional research, to decide what the course of action is, not just for elementary kids, but for secondary kids. So we have put aside, I believe it's $500,000 to put against this work, most likely in terms of social workers, behavior specialists, and so on. But it's just going to take a little bit more time to kind of fully vet all of these different ideas and, and flush out. Yeah.
Okay, this is my response to that. And I've said it before. That is critical. We deal with it day in and day out. So I don't know what has to be done, where we have to go, I don't know. But we have got to start addressing that now. And I know we have trauma informed, and we have mindfulness and, but a holistic plan, that, that is important. We see it at every disciplinary committee meeting. And we're seeing these issues, you know, we're seeing young kids who come through who are younger and younger and younger, and we don't have any alternatives.
Okay, wait a minute. I've got two ahead of you. So now I've got also to add Barlow and Burke. All right, Ms. Page, then Mr. Young, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I remember. I just want to go back to the Future Center again. What page is it on? Because I had it, but I can't.
The transition funding.
Right.
On page, yeah.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, not forty-four. Yeah, forty-two.
So, and this question is for the superintendent. So you said when you revise, you will include the five FTEs for the five comprehensive possible threat?
Well, we can, we can show the, the funds coming from the city for those five FTEs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that 75,000, you said is more?
That's additional because right now the education foundation spends more than just the salaries for various administrative functions. We believe we're likely able to absorb those administrative functions at a lower cost. But we did want to just include that buffer if we're missing something, so that we can maintain the Future Centers as they currently are.
Yeah, that would be helpful. That is very clear.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Two quick points. One, perhaps I'm going to say this differently than Felicia would have, but I do, like last year, think it's incumbent on us to pay for some of these new priorities with dollars in that 400 million or 311 million in general funds. That's the first point. I think it's really, it's incumbent on us to, to help ourselves by repurposing dollars. The, the second statement slash question pertains to CIP and specifically the ADA balance. So we have $275,000 earmarked for FY '20, which is exciting. But my question regards the balance, approximately $500,000, if we can expedite some of those, some of those dollars.
Yes, we want to spend those funds by July 1. So Jerrel, office of Widdies Planner, and Mr. Halfware are putting together a plan to get just that done. That's our intent.
All right, Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to echo points that Ms. Cosby made with respect to alternative ed. I think it is something that's come up really the past couple of years now. I kind of begrudgingly voted against the Camelot contract last year, hoping to see some significant movement in, in this respect. So I'm glad that we're adding that position so we can start to explore this. But I do hope this becomes a, one of our utmost priorities. Two other streams of thought here. One is with respect to the documentation that Ms. Gibson has been referring to. What, what specifically will be sent to the mayor's office when we approve our, or when we, yeah, approve this budget? Will it be the 150?
I defer to Ms. Braga.
Good evening again. Yes, typically, we do produce the school board approved document that goes to the city. In addition, we send some Excel spreadsheets that they include in their document. So the book that goes to them is strictly for information only. What they're really interested in are the spreadsheets that outline the revenue and the sorts of things. So they can write their ordinance, because they use those numbers to write the ordinance, to appropriate money to us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Braga. So to be, to be clear, your, when you say the, the spreadsheets, is it, is it this 150-page document that we've been referring to?
No, it's probably about five or six pages.
Five or six pages of documentation that we need to send to the mayor's office and to, to, before the final approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Before, well, okay, so based on what happens
For following final, final approval from us.
Tuesday.
Right.
We need to send documentation down. So they, I guess they know what our ask is. And then they'll let us know what the revenue resources are that they are going to provide. But we really won't know, typically don't know that until May, until after council gets together and votes and
Right. That, that piece I'm clear on. Okay. And then the, the other stream of thought, and thank you, Ms. Braga, is with respect to our process moving forward and how we're going to judiciously use our time over the next two meetings to approve this thing. And I feel like I've said it a million times already, I brought up the concept of adding an additional meeting, but I don't want to do that this time. I would like to have a very clear understanding amongst all the board members and the administration about what we expect at tomorrow's meeting, so we can use that time effectively and hopefully approve this document at the next meeting. So my expectation, based on what we've heard so far, is that we will see a modified budget document incorporating feedback that we have provided over the course of these past few meetings, including feedback from spreadsheet, which is good to know. Will, do you know when we will receive that document? I imagine that it'll take some time to put together. But any, any lead time we can get whatsoever is helpful to make sure that we're productive tomorrow night.
I don't think it's going to be possible to have anything prior to the meeting, given the volume of questions that have been raised tonight, and trying to be responsive to that and to everything that was loaded into the Google Doc in the past 24 hours. But we will have the full meeting tomorrow to discuss any modifications. There shouldn't be anything on that document, which is altogether surprising. It'll be reflective of the conversations we've been having. And then there'll be a full week between then and the 18th to further consider that, answer questions, I'm glad to do so, before a final discussion vote on, on the 18th.
Okay. And then the, the last piece here is with respect to, there, there are certain questions that the administration has included in this document elsewhere in our conversations about where you would like board, a board decision or board guidance on, on how to move forward. So can we have those listed in a manner that we can address those questions one by one, so you have that feedback before we head into the meeting on the 18th?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pretty much, Mr. Barlow has already stated and asked the same questions. I'm just going to ask in a different manner. I want to go back to Mrs. Cosby's thoughts regarding the alternative ed program. I fully agree with her that we do have the mindfulness program in place, behavior specialists to be hired, trauma specialists to be hired, and maybe baby rap is the answer. It may not be. But I do look forward to having the opportunity to have a study in place, which hopefully the new person coming in, if we approve, will be able to see what the best practices are now. It may be to have a program within a school, and children won't have to go through a long program to be able to be placed otherwise. But my concern also is how to tie that in with our general ed program and our special ed program. More energy needs to be placed. Sometimes our children, according to the guidelines that are in place, are placed under OHI, other, um, health impaired. And whereas if we can, my, my thought is that we address our children's needs and exhaust everything possible before getting to that place, because we all learn differently. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity to study and to evaluate what's in place regarding alternative programs. And also the opportunity, I'm glad that we're putting more energy towards special education, because that is an area across the board that needs to be addressed. And my last thought as well, as, as Mr. Barlow just stated, what exactly will I receive tomorrow? Because if we're going to have the same format as we have tonight, I don't want to come in on the 18th and that's, and see something to, to be voted on, and we haven't received a draft beforehand. So I'm looking forward to receiving a draft tomorrow and something to mull on before the 18th. Just exactly what, what is the format for tomorrow night? What should we expect to see? Thank you.
I will just say this. We can decide next Tuesday, when we are set to vote, that we don't feel ready to do that. But my feeling is, if there's some people at the table tonight who feel that that's a probability, then I think we need to go ahead and tomorrow night say we might need a meeting on the, the following week, because we need time. We can't, I mean, so the 18th, it, it would, we couldn't do it the next day, is what I'm saying. So it would, it would need to be like the 24th or the 25th. We don't absolutely have to. Oh, Ms. Dorr, all right. Hang on just a minute. Ms. Dorr?
Yeah, I, I was
I want to do that. You know I do. You know how I love extra meetings.
I know you do.
But I'm getting a sense here. So what did, what did you want to add to that?
Oh, I, I agree. I, in prior years, we have requested for more time, and we have been granted more time. And it feels like 24 hours for the administration to turn all this around, and then for us to have meaningful discussion feels like ambitious, yes. From both our perspective, but also out of, you know, I am mindful of Jason and his staff and being able to, you know, get this information to us. So I, frankly, I'm not super optimistic that tomorrow's going to be super productive, but I feel like maybe if we had another week, we might be more productive. But I know we can't cancel the meeting tomorrow, but I'm just speaking candidly.
Okay. So I, I have Ms. Page and then Ms. Gibson, and then I'm going to have Ms. Braga, if you wouldn't mind telling us when legally we must have approved this budget. Can I ask you to state that before we hear from Ms. Page and Ms. Gibson?
From a timeline perspective, what you're really dealing with is getting your request to the mayor before he presents his budget to council, which happens that first week in March. So whatever you do, we need to get it straight, approved, and then the documentation down, so that the mayor has time to incorporate our request in his presentation.
And the first Monday, and his would be the second Monday, would be the soonest he would meet with city council?
First Monday.
First Monday, which is the second, March the 2nd, which is two weeks from today. Three weeks from today. Let me look at the calendar. All right. You may ask your question, Mr. Cameras, and then I've still got two people waiting to speak.
Ms. Braga, approximately how long does it take you from point of approval to develop everything that needs to be submitted to the mayor?
I need a week.
Okay, thank you.
Please. Or a lot of late nights.
All right. So that's what, listening to what she's saying, the mayor needs to present his three weeks from today. And she needs a week. So she needs to have it, she needs to be working on it by the 24th? That's one week before he, he does.
And act on it by then, then yes. Like I said, to no.
So I'm just, I'm just sending you home with wheels turning, ladies and gentlemen. That's your homework. See, that's why I'm just getting this sent. So we will decide that tomorrow. Okay? When we see what we have and we have our discussion, which hopefully will be fruitful. I really do feel that we had some fruitful discussion this evening. And I have already looked at what some of you have put in the Google Docs, and I assume some of you have looked at what I put in Google Docs. So I, I'm hearing some of the same things from more than one person. So I expect tomorrow night, we'll be hitting some things pretty hard. So if you, we don't have to wait for the superintendent to respond to what's in the Google Docs. We can go look at what each other has written in there already. And then he and his team will be responding tomorrow night to those things we put in the Google Docs, as well as what has come up tonight. And at the end of the meeting tomorrow, which hopefully will be at 8:00 hopefully will be at 8:00 PM, not one minute later, we will make the decision whether we're going to meet on the 25th. So don't plan anything on the 25th. And then if we don't meet on the 25th, you'll be so excited.
It's the 25th or 24th.
The Monday. It's the 24th? I'm sorry. Am I looking at the wrong month? No, 24th. Okay, don't schedule anything. All right, wait a minute. I have Ms. Page, and then there was somebody over here.
And then somebody over here.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Cosby, Mr. Barlow. All right, talk fast.
So Madam Chair, so it sounds like that the 24th is a firm date for additional meeting?
We have not firmed it, and we won't till tomorrow night.
Well, just based on the sentiments around, it sounds like we need another meeting, and we want to make sure that we have the information that we have requested, board members have requested. And administration has the time to provide us the information so that we are able to make an informed decision.
Well, hopefully, we're still planning to have it on 18th.
I don't, yes, just based on what the comments, I don't feel like we're going to be ready on the 18th.
Okay.
So.
Ms. Gibson?
That's my input.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I'm, I, yeah, we've had good discussions, but we just haven't been as productive. Right now, we are several weeks into this budgeting process, and we haven't agreed on a single change. And the reason why we haven't agreed on a change is we haven't gotten any information in order to make any changes. And I do think that there is consensus among the board that something's going to change. And so we're behind if we want to be able to do that. So I guess my question is, in terms of the discussion that we have...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I was asking Ms. Lilly.
In terms of the discussion that we have tomorrow, if there isn't going to be additional information substantial from the administration, what are we doing? You know, I think there might be some value in having this next discussion, you know, three, four days out, whatever it needs to be, so that we actually have something new to look at. I also think that there would be value in ensuring that there's an additional meeting prior to the vote with public comment, and allowing another public hearing, you know, particularly because we are discussing making changes. And so, you know, at this point, all we've been doing is asking questions. And, you know, I think that we are at a stage where the board needs to be able to look at the list of items, determine yes, no, adding whatever, what needs to be, what we want to do. You know, another thing that we haven't talked about yet is the mandates. This is something that we've been asking for. What are those mandatory things that we absolutely have to have? That's kind of a foundation, basic information that should be outlined in every single budget that we've done, and we haven't seen that information yet.
Ms. Cosby?
I was just going to add, in terms of our format, at one, at some stage, so whether we have a meeting tomorrow, we're receiving additional information. At some meeting, we do have to say, okay, yes, stay, we're going to go with this. No, we're not, or we're going to repurpose to something else. So we can clearly see what's lined up with this document. Yes, we agree to manager, director, equity. No, we don't. This is money here that we want to repurpose to something else. I mean, but it's very clear, everyone can see it. And we make sure that we go through that process. That was an issue the last time. We didn't really go through that process.
The voting on each one. So that's my question. That's what I was trying to ask.
It would be gathering some sort of more...
Okay. So we can do that in a work session. Okay. That's just what I needed to clarify. Okay. So we can, in our work session tomorrow, right?
Sure.
Say we want this, we don't want that. Okay?
We're just receiving information tomorrow. I don't know if that's...
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we, if we, in the, what sounds like likely event that we have an extra meeting, can we add a public comment period for the budget? So...
Well, we have one on the, we have one on the 18th.
Yeah, I think an additional one for the later meeting would be helpful as well.
So it's sounding more and more like a later meeting.
This is important work that we're doing, Madam Chair.
It is very important, and it is one of the absolute things that we are tasked with doing.
Public comment or public hearing, because public hearing, I mean, 10 days to get it fixed.
Okay.
So do you have a motion for a 28th?
If we're going, we will have to decide that tomorrow. If we want a public hearing, what do we, we have a hearing on the 18th, right?
No, you've already had one hearing. So you have some public comments left, and then public hearings passed without...
All right. So what we have next time, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, is public comment, not public hearing. We would need 10 days' notice, and it would cost $250 to do a public hearing instead of public comment. So think about all of that as part of your homework tonight and tomorrow, okay, about exactly where we're going forward with, tomorrow, we're going to receive a lot more information, and we're going to make a decision about what we're doing with the budget on the 18th, and I'll just say probably on the 25th.
24th.
24th. I just can't get over that.
He wants to see the 24th and 25th. That's what it is.
No, I do not. No, we need to do it on the 24th, because that would give Ms. Braga a week. Give her, well, it gives her, if she has to get it to him on the 1st, she can get it to him at 4:00 on the 1st.
I'll put that question on.
Well, then when do you want to, we'll talk about it tomorrow. All right. Anything else before we go home and start our work? Okay.
Thank you.
I thought I already signed up.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
What time? I had a commitment to community. At that time?